Thank you for our many blessings, the opportunity to meet this evening, to have our voices heard, and the many rights and freedoms that we enjoy in this great country of ours. We ask for your strength, guidance, and wisdom in our deliberations this evening, and that we all treat each other with dignity and respect. In your son's name, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, limited to justice for all.
We have a quorum this evening, so thank you very much. Any announcements?
There are no announcements.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is review and approval of the minutes of October 3rd, 2018. There is one correction to the minutes on page 13, under public comment. The speaker, we noted the speaker inadvertently stating SEC says when it should be S-Power says. So I believe the minutes have been updated online. So, other than that, I don't think there are any other questions or comments, and so I'll take a motion to approve.
Amen.
All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Any unfinished business?
No.
Next, we will move into review and approval of the preliminary plat, excuse me, P-18-03.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. This is a preliminary plat for Regency at Chancellorsville North, which is a subdivision of 48 acres, zoned planned development housing District 8, the zoning of which and proffers were approved back in 2015. The development consists of 137 age-restricted, single-family detached lots with an average lot size of 5,293 square feet. Access to the development will be provided by the existing Lee's Command Boulevard off of Quarter Avenue, which is currently the access to Regency at Chancellorsville. Consistent with the approved proffers for the development, a restricted access on Spotswood Furnace Road will be provided for emergency use only. And there will be private streets internal to the development, the lots will be served by public water and sewer, and over 25 acres will be reserved as open space. The proposed preliminary plat does meet all ordinance requirements for approval, and staffs recommending approval with the adoption of the resolution in your packet. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Kim? Hearing none, I'll make a motion to approve. All those, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? Very well. Motion passes. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, public hearing, CA-18-04.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Is it appropriate for me to speak at this time?
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much. With me, I'm Troy Tigner. I'm the Director of Co-Compliance and zoning administrator for the county. With me tonight is Richard Street, our Senior Environmental Engineer, and we're here to present Code Amendment 18-0004 regarding a amendment of our erosion code, which is part of our county code, Chapter 8, that deals specifically with the adoption of a new fee for large-scale development, or what we might call mega-developments that would range in the proposed fee schedule between 400 and over 3,000 acres. We have reviewed our current fee schedule and find that a typical construction site contemplated an inspector going around that site to review the perimeter of the site, reviewing the stormwater or erosion features, erosion sediment basins, erosion silt fence along perimeter of a site. And most sites in the county are less than 100 acres. A large site is 100 acres, such as, say, Dominion Raceway, that was a development of 110 acres at one time. When you reach a size of 400 to 4,000 acres with development, our fee structure falls apart because of the mandated state inspections for erosion controls every two weeks or after a significant rainfall event that produces runoff. That requires, over the life of an 18-month project generally for commercial, 12 months to 18 months, a significant number of inspections. And when you're dealing with a scaled-up project that might come to the county, we would really have a hole, I believe, in our budget that would be very significant for the Co-Compliance Department that we could not make up through the adopted fees. So that's what we're presenting tonight. We have reviewed the language in the code amendment, actually with Alexandra Spalding, and she was pretty tough on me, back and forth. But we believe that the language that you see here with four criteria meets the test of the Virginia Code and the enabling legislation to adopt fees under erosion ordinance and the Erosion Sedimentation Act of the State of Virginia. I'm available if you have any questions, along with Mr. Street.
Yeah, actually, when you say large-scale projects, is that, what's that based off? Is that overall acreage, land disturbance, phased land disturbance? How do you determine that?
Where, in the schedule, it would be land disturbance activity. That's a blade in the ground pushing dirt, as determined on our site plan, and as tripping our ordinances under the definition of land disturbance activity is removal of the turf and topsoil. And it's 400, it would not apply until it's at least 400 acres of land disturbance on a site plan, and it escalates up to over 3,000 acres.
Any other questions or comments?
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Would this cover any applications that we already have in front of us now? Troy, would this, would they be grandfathered in?
This would be effective once it was approved, like most code amendments, the night it was voted. And we do not have any projects right now that theoretically could be approved before this would be on the books.
Thank you. Yes, Mike?
Do we have any examples of projects that we currently have approved that are greater than 400 acres? Just kind of curious to get a size-wise, you know, any projects?
Well, Lee's Park, Pod D, is approximately 300 acres. That's right at almost tripping the threshold. The racetrack was 110 acres of land disturbance. Richard, help me if you're thinking of any others that are large. Yeah, it's a pretty significant project when you're up over 400 acres. I mean, that really is something that's quite significant.
So with those pods in Lee's Park, does it pertain to each pod, or the overall plan, you know, GDP for all of the pods combined? What would be the tripping mechanism there?
It would be the site plan and the land disturbance activity shown on the site plan.
In these fees, how do they compare to other jurisdictions in the area, neighboring counties?
Well, you got me on that one. We didn't do a comparison. But I would say that the opportunity to utilize a fee like this is fairly rare. As we just mentioned, I don't think we can actually find a project that's been open 400-acre cut more. Which one would that be? Kings Dominion. Oh, that doesn't count. It's in Hanover County. So, you know, the opportunity to use this fee would be fairly, fairly rare. I mean, we have had other projects, you know, mentioned in economic development hypothetically that would be significant. We just had one the other day that was tremendous area underbuilding that would require more than 1,000 acres of land. And sooner or later, Spotsylvania County, being on 95 between the capitals, is going to land a very big, significant project. And when that does, if we're not prepared, it will immediately blow a hole in our Co-Compliance budget that would be about a half a cent on a tax rate to make it up.
So walk me through an example here. If we had a 400-acre, 400-acre to less than 1,000-acre site plan that came in, and our proposed fee is $7,000 per month?
Yes, sir. At 400 acres, it would trip a $7,000 fee. We have third-party procured engineering inspectors that we could put on a project of 400 acres. We have three firms under contract. There's a primary firm, which is Sullivan, Donahue, and Ingalls, and then there are two backup firms, Wellford Engineering and Webb and Associates. Those engineering services are currently procured, and they have the equivalent of 15 staff members and three engineers that they can have at our disposal at any particular time. So that, and then they would, on their set rates in the procurement, they would send an invoice, and that would be paid through the collected $7,000.
And, so I'm trying to understand, so the $7,000 per month, that would be for each month that the site is, what, not stable, until it's stabilized? How does that work?
Yes, sir. It would be for the length of the project. The project is covered under a bond, erosion sedimentation bond. But that bond really is only for the value in case a project forecloses and, you know, the contractor leaves the area, then the county's left with all this open expanse of land. We have to have a surety in order to contract out to stabilize that land so that doesn't erode.
But these fees are in addition to the bond?
Yes. These fees are in addition to the bond. That is to pay for the mandatory inspections of that 400 acres that's required every two weeks or after a rainfall event, and also to follow up on any enforcement actions that have to be taken. Construction sites, and you're probably familiar with construction sites, they really evolve depending on the season of the year, the amount of rain we're getting, the type of soil types, rough-cut grading versus final grading. Soils are stockpiled, soils are equalized on a site. The whole range of civil engineering occurs on construction sites before you get that finished look. And for the entire duration of that project, as all those phases of development occur, we're responsible for being there every two weeks. And DEQ actually routinely is visiting our sites. Many of the DEQ officials live in the county, and we get a significant amount of call-ups to say, hey, we're coming to your county today. We want to go look at sites A, B, and C. And they retain all that enforcement authority, and we have to follow up with them when they want to look at sites.
So if you had a, I'm going to go back to my example again. So if you had a 400-acre site at $7,000 a month, that's projected to be, let's just call it a year-long, but after six months, the site is stabilized, but work is continuing, does the inspection fee stop at this, fee stop at that point? Or how?
The inspection fee would be as long as we have to inspect the site, and that's until a final bond release inspection is approved.
For the erosion controls?
For the erosion controls, yes.
Okay, I got it.
Yes, sir.
Very well. Any other questions or comments?
Yes, sir.
Yep.
With our third-party consultants that come out and take a look at this, how long are their contracted rates good for?
They are throughout the four-year contract.
Okay, four-year contract?
Yes, sir. We're actually in the fourth year of the four years. And we started this procurement after the adoption of the new Virginia Stormwater Management Act in the county in 2014. So next year, we would rebid those under our procurement policies.
And so what happens if, I'm reading here on the, right above the stated fees, some of the situations, like, what happens if their bill goes up? Right now, the, instead of costing you 7,000, it costs you 8,000 to county for the third party. That gets passed on to?
We propose that that little bit of overage would be picked up on the next billing cycle. And likewise, it could be an underage, which would also have to be picked up. It's going to be a little bit of paperwork and tracking involved in this, but we have an online computer system. Invoices are sent in, they're sent to finance, it's multiple checks and balances. We can handle the financial aspect of managing the money in, money out. Yes, sir.
And do you project these rates being sufficient for your next four years when you bid this out?
Yes, sir. I do not anticipate that these rates would change very much from what they are.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thanks, Troy. I'll open it up to the public. At this point in time, this is the time for you to express any comments or concerns you have for the Planning Commission's consideration. Be mindful of your remarks in terms of civil and tone, respectful in nature. This is designed to be a one-way communication from you to us. This applies for all of our public comments this evening. Please come forward when called and introduce yourself and note your voting district or your address. If you're representing a, yourself, you will be given three minutes. If you're speaking on behalf of a group, we'll allow you five minutes. Only one person may speak on behalf of the entire group. Because groups are given extra time before the Planning Commission, we strongly hope that other members of that group will have their individual concerns or comments expressed as part of the group's message. If you are a member of the group but wish to speak on your own behalf, you may do so. Any speakers this evening regarding this? All right, very well. I'll open it up to the floor. Anybody wish to speak on this that's not signed up? All right, very well. I'll close that portion of the public comments. Any other questions or comments? With that, I'll take a motion on this, on this action.
Please, the Chair, I move to approve.
I have a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Thank you. Motion passes. Next up, we have the discussion item for Stormwater and Management Technologies. Mr. Street.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Now, you can hear me.
Now I can hear you.
Not yet. Floor computer, please. All right. Wanda asked us to give you an update on the Stormwater Management Technologies and where we are in Spotsylvania County. And through our history, we've had some hiccups, and we've had some good projects, shall we say. And what happened was, DEQ or DCR at the time, they weren't ready to handle new stormwater management technologies, especially when the original Stormwater Management Act came into play. They were dumbfounded, didn't know how to do it. So they went to localities and asked us to help, and we started installing some innovative technology on our own, allowing developers to be flexible. And we did so with pretty good success. What we ended up doing was, a few years, no, it's not doing the animation, okay. This is Mount Zion Baptist Church. It was a small church on the corner of Piedmont and Harrison, and they needed to expand. Now, this church has been there forever. Matter of fact, the original church is under the pavement now of Harrison Road. And they needed to expand it. But the problem is, the houses around them were too expensive for them to purchase at the time to build a stormwater management basin. This is almost 15 years ago or more that they originally came in with the plan. So instead of doing a traditional stormwater management basin with, would be a holding pond, which would be hazardous to the kids in the neighborhood, but also hazardous to the kids at the church, we helped them out, and we came up with a design that used basically grass parking spaces and stone travelways. And they're on what's called a GeoGrid, which basically holds the stone in place so they never have to replace it. If they get any tire ruts or anything like that, they go out there and rake it, and it doesn't leave the site. Another advantage of it is, is wherever the cars are parked, because the cars are only there on a Saturday or a Sunday, they're not there all the time. They're not blocking the sun completely. So the grass still grows underneath these cars. And what will happen is, is the water runs into it quickly. Well, whoops. Got it. Here we go. Sorry about that. That was my fault. There's the original church. And we had to do improvement because they wanted to enlarge it. But look, it's almost four times more larger than it was originally. Now, over here, this tan area, this is gravel or the grass parking spaces, and this darker brown area here is the travelways. Now, with these in place, that replaced the use of a stormwater management basin. But if you look up here, these details up here, and we called them when they first came in glorified milk crates, but it's called a rain tank. And that rain tank is wrapped in geotech fabric and then surrounded by sand. With that rain tank being wrapped in geotech fabric, it actually filtered the water as it would go inside, in and out of the doggone sand and the filter fabric. You actually have water that could be used as a cistern if you wanted to. So they've taken some of that, and in certain areas here, they have special rain gardens and special-designed wetlands that they created for educational purposes for the school kids, so they can come out any time. When they turned it around, they discharged it up. At this point, what was originally coming out was a 15-inch pipe. With the new system using the rain tank system underground here as a storage facility, it's now a 6-inch pipe. When it was first installed, VDOT was questioning if it would work or not, because for years, they had always had issues with the ditch flowing downhill on Piedmont Drive, and it's scouring out and hurting some neighbors and stuff yards, things like that. As soon as this was installed, and the first few rain events, which were pretty phenomenal at the time, because we had just gotten off of a big drought, VDOT came in and said, we need more of these. And we said, what do you mean? They said, nothing's coming out of the pipes at all, even after a three- or four-inch rain event. So we sat there and we tried to help them, and here's what it looked like the day of our final inspection, where the grass was green and the gravel's in, working perfectly. They've never had to replace the gravel, they've never had to replace the grass. And then they sat there, and we look at the site today, and this is what it looks like now, according to Google Earth. And one thing we did not take into account, because the entire footprint here of the parking spot and the travelway underground has the rain tanks. We found out later, we only needed the rain tanks under the travelways, because they have to water the grass now more often, because it flows through so quickly, the grass can't drink it and take it up. Then we got a little further along, and what ended up, the next challenge for us, if you see the red line, this is Steak and Shake. The red line flowing through here is the RPA, the Resource Protection Area. According to the state code, you cannot have any increase in impervious surface. So what Troy and I proposed to them was that this entire parking lot would be porous asphalt, and we did that. This first circle here is their discharge pipe from the porous parking lot. We put in a redundancy, being a stormwater management detention basin, concerned that this would not work. We were worried it was going to clog, and they wouldn't maintain it properly. What ended up happening, though, as you see the material that was being placed, the parking lot was sand, and this is that outlet structure right here. And when you look at it, it didn't dawn on us when we saw this photo, this is after a couple of rain events, there was nothing in this discharge area. There should have been some kind of sediment during construction. We were expecting it. It wasn't there. So as we went further, and they paved it, this is the day before they were ready to open, we had a storm event come through the night before that dumped three inches of rain on it. And this basin should have had water in it. There was no water in it whatsoever. So nothing's been coming out of the site. So we've been watching it and paying close attention to it. And then we turned around and took a look at the recent photos here. We had a group from South Korea come to visit Spotsylvania County to see what we have done with stormwater management and low-impact development. This and the church were two of the sites we were showing them. And when they were here visiting, we educated them on Spotsylvania history for the stormwater management and low-impact development, and then we took them to this site. Now, at this point, they are standing right here. The night before they came out here, we had almost four inches of rain dumped on us, and that basin should have been filled with water. We should not have been able to run out there or walk out there, stand out there, let alone be there without water under our feet. So there was no water getting into this basin, to the point where the developer or the owner of the property was actually thinking about closing this basin and just having some kind of underground storage and create a pad site for this area. It was an option, but now with the new development that's coming in, we told them to leave the pond alone. We still need it, because they're relying on the pond for their water quality and quantity. So another one that's come up lately, and this is a newer technology we're using or attempting to use, Publix had an issue where they had to meet the newer restrictive stormwater management criteria. Even though this pad site was grandfathered, or the overall development was grandfathered, they changed the structure enough that they had to create or follow the new guidelines. So to do so, they had to come up with an underground system. And we helped them by listening to what they had to offer. What they're doing is, and this is very innovative, this underground system, it's going to look like catacombs. You'll see photos here in a few minutes or a few seconds. This one chamber here, however, is filled with sand and slag, old iron slag. And if it's used right, the slag actually has a high rate of phosphorus and nitrogen removal efficiency. So you mix it with the sand, and you've got the perfect filter for any volume of water that comes into it. As long as the water sits in it for at least 10 minutes, you have got the perfect filter. Well, here's what the structures look like. And here they are installed. This is underground, and you can actually place a building on top of this or have truck parking on top of it. It is a live load chamber for underground. It's not plastic, it's not any kind of styrofoam or anything else. It is concrete. And when it's being built, this is what it looks like. And if you see here, these walls in this far photo, that's where that chamber is, where the filtering material is at. The filtering material needs to be replaced once every 50 years, but it will need to be cleaned out. We've told them, once a year, we want it monitored and checked to see if it'll be cleaned, see if it has any trash in it and things like that. That's part of our regular maintenance agreement. Now, solar farms, or actually large-scale projects, this is, this was something we were trying to figure out. On large-scale projects and projects similar to solar farms, we said, here's what we want to see, native Virginia grasses. We want to see native Virginia pollinators and forbs. And the reason being is, if you look over to this side, look at the root of regular Kentucky fescue that you want in your yard. It's only a matter of four to six inches, if that, whereas our native Virginia grasses can go up to four to six feet or more. So the roots are better, they take better, and they last longer. They'll tolerate droughts, they'll tolerate floods, and they will still be there. They'll come back quicker and stronger. They are only mowed once a year, where, how many times are we mowing our grass during the summer now for our yards? It's, you know, the average of once, maybe twice a week, depending on how much rain we get. So we're promoting more of the native plants, and matter of fact, DCR and DEQ are creating a new guideline, shall we say, for native pollinators. And they're trying to get more farmers that will create basically native Virginia grasses to become seed grasses, because we can never find enough native seed when people are constructing. It could be used not just on large-scale projects, but also on construction projects. So if we change it to native plants in the seed mix instead of straight Kentucky fescue with maybe some crown vetch, things like that, this will take quicker. with maybe some crown bitch, things like that, this will take quicker, last longer, and it only needs to be mowed once a year. So, there's another thing that we found, and these are some products that instead of doing a traditional drip lined stone trench, which we've done in the past, we were looking for something that could create a product or, there are several products out there that would create a chamber underground here that would actually get the water back into the ground and recharge the groundwater. This would also help feed the native grassroots. So, simple chambers like this, which are only about three to six inches wide, and it's right at the drip line, and over top of it you put your stone. And the stone is just there to slow the water down and get it into this chamber. Then you would grade everything down to these chambers and it would flow great right into the chambers themselves, and you could either have them as like interior pipes or just let them sit and soak the water in. It depends on the soils you're dealing with. And then, what we want is something like this, and this is what we need. Because eventually, the photo of the previous, ding, there we go, this one is when the flowers aren't in bloom, this one is when they are. And if the native Virginia plants are used properly, you could have flowers year round is what we've been showing. Now, what we've had in recent years, for many years, there've been a long list of items that can and cannot be used by the state. And the state for the longest time said they didn't really care what we used as long as we got the quality and quantity that they were looking for. Well, with the new state regulations, we're kinda tied to the list that's being produced by a group from Virginia Tech, the BMP Clearing House. We've used many of the items that they've already said, but we're finding out nine times out of ten, some of these manufactured products that they want us to test and even approve and use in the county, which we have used several of them on the good word that it'll work. But we're finding we're still getting scour downstream from our stormwater management facilities, scour that we have not seen in almost six years because we were helping them design these things to where they wouldn't discharge so much. The Steak and Shake site, there is zero stormwater runoff. It doesn't even come out on a one-year storm rate. It stays on site, so it charges back into the ground. Publix comes out at less than the one-year storm rate, even with the salastering where we got six inches in Thornburg alone. It comes out only at the one-year storm rate. Now, these are things that we were told couldn't be done. They said, "It won't work, you cannot design for that." And yet, here we have it. And the same thing occurred with the Mount Sinai Baptist Church. We've designed it to where it has no discharge until there's a ten-year storm. That means the first fifteen minute flush, which is the pollution load, is treated and kept in on-site. So, there's no pollutants coming off-site. And what we found, and we're starting to do it quite often here, is utilizing the required landscaping. So, in other words, if we have a buffer that is required, which almost every one of our commercial sites have a required buffer, we allow them to run the stormwater management or the stormwater through it with just simple channels and allow the trees to take it up naturally like it has to, or the brush, the bushes, whatever we have to design. We're also getting more innovative sites where they're coming up with designs that we never even considered, where they changed some of them into the grass pave and things like that, but for parking areas. And they're having all their stormwater run to these areas, and it's working very well. We're getting some parking lots where they come in and instead of doing the curb and gutter, they'll put in curb cuts and give us stone trenches behind the curb cuts and then release it naturally into the vegetation. And what they're finding is, there's been no discharge. So, we've actually reduced the runoff pollution load, we've also reduced the sediment load, and even the long-term construction, there's no scour, there's no sediment transport, and there's no vegetation dying because the water's getting back into the ground to feed it. And that's what we're finding out is working more often and much better than what we've had in the past.
One of the things that Richard and Putsan is called an Engineers Quarterly. We're gonna have one coming up on the twenty-third, it's Publix invited, but there is a routine email list that goes out to most engineers who do business in our county. That's where they get exposure to these types of discussions on innovative BMP practices. We even have vendors that come out to some meetings that we've held at the School Administration Building with as many as a hundred and fifty attendees, where we allow vendors to set up and show different things. I wish we'd have brought a few things to show you because they're really, it's hard to believe. One thing is a little disc of glass and it looks like it's solid, but if you pour water through it, it has porosity, it just, water just flows right through it. He has chunks of concrete this big in his office, you can pour water on it, you can't get any of the water to run to the edge of the concrete block, it runs right through as quick as you can. And one of the things he didn't speak about is this porous pavement allows for a quicker removal of ice on the parking lots, that it just disappears from the area where it's porous pavement. And you see a lot of places, like even a large shopping complex like the Williamsburg Outlet Mall, they went back and retrofitted their parking lots. If you go down there, you'll see why they, in the older section, they made some cuts and they actually put in porous asphalt paving area but retained the solid asphalt driving aisle. And I think as you look around other areas of the state, like Richard mentioned, we went to Fairfax County with the South Korean delegation, and we looked at many of their urban, high urban sites in Fairfax County. And I dare say, the site that Richard just showed you has more innovative BMP practices incorporated into that site than any site we looked at in Fairfax County. The one thing that Fairfax County beat us on that I saw as an environmental practice was a green roof. We do not have a lot of tall buildings and we don't have that much of an urban environment yet for green roof structures. They're probably coming in the future, but I just wanted to add that, that we have a continuous outreach to our local community and through Fredericksburg Area Builders Association and through an Engineers Quarterly. And we routinely meet with members of the building and engineering community to discuss topics like this, and it's been, it's been pretty well received. And I think that almost every site now has multiple practices on it. Even if you look at our Spotsylvania Regional Hospital, surround that hospital, you really don't see them because they're tucked in. But there are about forty bio retention facilities in that parking lot. There are little curb cuts that direct truncated sections of that asphalt parking lot into a bio retention facility, albeit a mini one. It has soil amendments and vegetation in it, and if you notice, there'll be a curb cut that allows the sheet flow of the water that washes all the oils, gas, copper filings, everything that comes over your car engine washes into that and protects it from going into the environment. So, I just wanted to add that, a little piece about our outreach and what we do in the community to educate the community on these stormwater practices. Thank you.
Yeah, if I may. Well, these innovations we've talked about, they will eventually, will they limit the catch ponds that we have?
Yes, sir. I think that the whole philosophy now in stormwater management is getting that water back into the ground. The old philosophy was, you just build that big mosquito pond and you just fill it up and you let it trickle out a little bit. Now, the philosophy is, don't hold that water, let it get into the ground, let its sheet flow off the parking lot, go right into a bio retention that soaks it up. Another facility, if you're in Ashland, it's taken about an acre of flat rooftop. There's an Iron Horse Restaurant around the corner by the railroad track. If you go just to the left of that, they installed a permeable block structure over top of sixteen inches of stone aggregate. And then beyond that, they put a cigar pond bio retention facility. They can't get any water in the bio retention facility, it won't get past what they put in the parking lot. And that was a big, that was a DEQ promoted facility. DEQ actually came out and we went down to look at that facility, it was one of the first ones put in in a city like that, that absorbed all the, all the water from that rooftop goes right into that parking lot, gets right into the ground. And you don't, you know, in a torrential storm, the water's just coming out of those gutter pipes that come off. It's an old style building, you know, with regular gutter pipes jetting out into the parking lot, it just, it doesn't flow six feet, it goes into the parking lot.
Excellent. I'd like to see those mosquito ponds go away. Thank you.
Any, any data or feedback on the maintenance of these structures, facilities? Are they, are they being maintained? Are they, any issues with them? Probably it's more of a zoning issue, compliance issue than it is anything at this point. I'm just wondering if, in terms of maintenance, are these facilities being maintained so they perform?
Well, we have a three-year certification process, it's self-reporting the first two years. Third year, they have to provide us an engineer report on all BMP facilities that are held in, by Spotsylvania County on all these sites. So, we're getting engineers out there in the field, and I think Richard probably is better tuned to speak to that, but to Mr. Thompson's comment, these ponds just collect trash and McDonald's cups and they, they become just a really bad-looking situation where they have to be cleaned out with regular maintenance. I think the in-ground technologies, although they're new, they certainly are containing the water and getting it back into the ground.
And right now, we have, I dare say, about seven thousand BMP agreements. That's from two thousand and five to now. And of those, they are all getting letters from us every three years saying that they're on their cycle, it's time for them to inspect. It is understood, like Troy said, they gotta inspect it, self-inspect it. Now, it could be their landscaper, if they're doing the basin or the bio retention, they see a dead plant, they see the bulkhead or something is failing, they let us know or they let the HOA know, whoever owns it. And then they turn around and get an engineer in there, and usually the engineer will come in and say, "Yeah, you need to do this, this, and just replace it." And that's when they tend to get it all done and fairly quickly, before they even bring it back to us. So, before we see the final product, the, usually what we see is the letter saying, "It's approved," and here's the items that they did to maintain it, to correct it.
Very well. Any other questions? Yeah, Mike?
So, I saw a lot of these have, not commercial but bigger sites. What about residential developments? I know there's probably similar technologies, but that's where a lot of those mosquito ponds are coming from. What, can we use some of these same technologies or different things for those type situations?
We have over two thousand BMPs in existing single-family residents. They were all before two thousand and five. Most of them are installed voluntarily, we can't ask or tell them they have to do it. Some of them, the most recent ones, they're installing the rain barrels and things like that, and we try to remind them. And we've seen several builders come right out and have a, an agreement recorded with the lot that says that they will maintain a rain barrel or a rain garden. They do, they will not pave it over, they'll leave the vegetation in place, things like that. So, they're doing it on their own to protect themselves because they know it's part of their water quality. The county has no measures to enforce on a single-family residence, that's the, that's the only issue. Even with DEQ, it's all voluntary.
I was thinking more of the roads and maybe the design standards for anything impervious, right? The driveways or things of that nature. We can use some of these products that'll help remove some of them, some of the water from going down to the streets, going naturally to a stream somewhere, retention pond into a stream. That would be something kind of interesting to do, maybe cost prohibitive for the builders. But if we had the technology to do that on a commercial or site, could we do it on a micro level but a whole bunch of different times throughout?
Well, we actually can, we're actually seeing it. There's a program called the Virginia Conservation Awareness Program, it's called VCAP. And it's basically for developments that have no stormwater management. So, you're talking the developments that came in in the thirties, the forties, the fifties, sixties, and even in the seventies, where they have no stormwater management, there's no basin, there wasn't even consideration for flood control at that point. What they've done is they come in with the VCAP program from DCR, and you go through the soil water conservation districts and you can ask for help, basically. And what they've done in our area is they've actually replaced driveways with porous pavement. They did it here, they did it in Stafford, and they did two in the city of Fredericksburg. They've also helped with some of the old stream restorations and stuff, but the problem is, is if it's, they can only handle one lot at a time. Most of these streams that have issues are like twenty or thirty lots, and they need to talk to all of them, and the grant's not designed for that. But the, the local soil water conservation district has helped us with those. As far as requiring it for new ones, we would have to change our ordinances to do that.
Anything else? That was great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, next up, we have any new business this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on to the public comment portion of our agenda. Again, I take you back to my comments earlier for the previous application. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and your voting district. If you don't know that, your address is fine. And you'll be given three minutes, and if you're representing a group, please identify that group, you'll be given five minutes. And address your comments to the planning commission, please. Do you have anybody signed up this evening?
David Hammond, followed by Sean Fogarty. It may be on the other desktop because I logged into the network. So, we'll have to reboot.
While they're getting that ready, I'd like to speak to the issue about stormwater management.
Absolutely.
I'm Rick Furnable with Sullivan Donahoe in Ingles, and I was enjoying the presentation that Mr. Street gave tonight. And one of the things that the commissioners brought up was the reduction and elimination of stormwater management basins and trying to move away from that technology. And something that I've been talking about for probably the last couple of years is a suggestion that the county consider modifying their ordinance to reduce the minimum square footage for subdivision projects that require curb and gutter. Presently, the requirement is at twenty-five thousand square foot per lot, and we have suggested a reduction of that. The main reason for doing that would be so that when you have a curb and gutter section, every time you have curb and gutter, you have to introduce a storm sewer system. Storm sewer system concentrates the water in a pipe and conveys it to a point, and the only way to treat that effectively and economically is in stormwater management basin. DEQ and others have suggested changes to stormwater management design for ways of doing the groundwater recharge, that, trying to get the water back in, into the subsoil. And roadside ditches are one of the best ways to do that. Grass whales are a great treatment facility. They are also easy to maintain. Normally, the homeowner right in front of the driveway will, or excuse, in front of the lot will, will take care of that area, it's not, not an issue for VDOT. And so, if you all are interested in improving and reducing the requirement for stormwater management basins, I strongly recommend you look at a reduction in that requirement. VDOT has a requirement for utilities under streets that show the minimum lot size that allows, or excuse me, the maximum lot size that allows for utilities under streets at ten thousand square feet or less. So, if you have utilities under the streets, which is the location that the utility operators, the counties prefer, you're going with a ten thousand square foot lot. So, I would suggest the county look at trying to unify this VDOT requirement for utilities under the streets and the roadside ditches and make that instead of twenty-five thousand square feet, ten thousand, so everything is the same. Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it. Whom member is next? Yeah? Yeah?
Floor computer, please.
Good evening. My name is David Hammond. Live in the Livingston District, and I'm speaking for myself tonight. Topic for tonight is protection of sensitive wetlands, and I do appreciate the discussion from Richard and Troy. What I want to draw your attention to, this first map that's up on the screen, is S-Power's proposed five watershed areas for, for the site, encompassing all three sites, Site A, B, and C. The next, the next slide breaks those up further into 11 subzones, and they're trying to get down to this 400-acre development parcel that, that we were talking about before. But, the, my, my problem with this, if you go to the next slide, and that's, hopefully you can see it on the slide, it's, it's also on this, on this map. What, what I've done is gone through and actually drawn the, the streams that flow through the site, and, and named them, and show how they actually flow. And the point I really want to make tonight is, Sites A and C all flow into the Po River. The start of the Po River is just outside of the boundary of this proposed facility. So, when S-Power shows, you know, four different watersheds, in, in reality, it's all the Po River watershed. The, the one that is different, a point down here to Plentiful Creek, that, that one flows south into Lake Anna. All, all of the rest of this area is the watershed for Po River, and the Po River starts right here. So, the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality designates the Po River, Robertson Run, McCracken Creek, the Mata Penai River as threatened and endangered species waters. And, so, that's what I'm showing you on the map there. Plentiful Creek is designated as moderate significant for biodiversity. It's also an important stream, we shouldn't forget that, but it's much smaller. You know, Site B is only 245 acres out of the 6,350 acres. So, the bulk of the site is forming the Po River. And that's the point I'm trying to make tonight. In some of the discussion before, if you compare this project to one of the largest developments in the county, the 2,270-home Jackson Village development, that was 241. And at the time that was passed in 2015, that was called the largest development in the county. So, you know, as was said before, 400 acres is big, and how, how this is allowed to be developed, doing multiple, 400 acres concurrently, I think poses a big risk to the Po River and these streams. So, thank you for your time.
Sean Fogarty, followed by Vivian Stanley.
Can we have the floor computer again? I'm Sean Fogarty in the Livingston District. I'm speaking for myself. I recently learned that the S-Power, that S-Power applied to our grid provider PJM to connect another 300 megawatts to the PJM grid through the same substation in Spotsylvania County. This should be of great concern to the county and its residents. On your monitors is information taken today from the PJM website. Key points you'll see there, S-Power applied in July to upgrade the connection to the PJM grid to 800 megawatts, presumably so they can connect another 300 megawatts of solar power generated electricity in the future. The electricity could come from S-Power projects or from others built nearby. Future projects are likely to be 150 megawatts or less for tax reasons, so there would likely be two or more projects developed in the future under that 300-megawatt application. These future projects will lock in thousands of more acres of land to an 80% tax-exempt usage and 35 years of declining tax revenue. The county would go from zero renewable energy projects to being one of the very largest in the country. At S-Power community meetings and in correspondence, the county and its residents have been told several different stories as to why S-Power made this application with PJM. None of those were convincing. As you can see from the table on the monitors, after multiple inquiries from residents and the county staff, S-Power did withdraw their application last Friday. It was posted on the PJM website yesterday. You can see on the table there, it says, "Withdrawd." So, the only active one listed is the original 500-megawatt one from a couple of years ago. Some people might think that this should be the end of the story. I disagree with that. The application was buried on the PJM website and only discovered by residents' diligent research. S-Power did not provide the county or citizens with any idea of their plans for this additional 300 megawatts, and once it was discovered, they provided several reasons for the application, and still won't disclose their true intent. I fully expect that if and when the pending special use permit is approved, they will resubmit their 800-megawatt upgrade application with subsequent special use permit requests for two additional 150-megawatt solar facilities. Their actions have been less than forthcoming to both the residents and the county. Additionally, this application, even though it's withdrawn, underscores the importance and urgency of changing the comprehensive plan by limiting the distance between two solar power plants and restricting how much total area the county can be used for utility-scale solar power generation. Thank you.
Vivian Stanley, followed by Chuck Watkins.
Last time I spoke to you, I told you about some people who had cancer caused by cadmium, which is one of the toxins that they would be using in the solar panels. Everybody says, "Oh, they're sealed, it's not going to get out." Well, now, we all know that's not true. They're going to get broken, they're going to get watered down into the soil, into the air. That's just ridiculous. So, all these people that had cadmium poisoning, they all died. Now, I want to tell you about the poisoning deaths of entire communities. The communities were in Germany. Thousands of people taken to the death camps built by Germans, executed for or for no other reason, just because they were considered to be worthless and of no value to the Germans. Now, we have a handful of people, such as yourself and the planning commission, who have pledged to do the best they can for the entire community. Personally, I expect to hold you to that, and I know a lot of people in the community are trusting that you are good, honorable people, and you don't want to see mothers, fathers, children, grandparents die of cadmium-poisoned cancers. Allowing a death camp to be built in the middle of Livingston community of 20,000 people is not the best. Cadmium and the other toxins in our air, water, and soil are not the best. It only takes small amounts of cadmium to be very dangerous to people. Tiny little bits. Doesn't take. You don't have to go over there and lie on the solar panel and absorb it. Toxic water, air, and soil are not the best for Livingston District. It would be morally reprehensible to not care about the health and well-being of an entire community. The only difference between the German death camp and the S-Power death camp is that the Germans built the camp and then put those they considered worthless into the death camp. In the Livingston District, the people are already there, and the camp would be built in the middle of the community of those considered, by some, not all, to have no value, as they do not pay enough in taxes. And I happen to have that in writing from one of the board of supervisors. Never in my lifetime did I think that the atrocities of the Germans would be repeated anywhere in America. Vote no to the special permit. Show all of us that your moral compass is alive and well, and that our trust is not misplaced. No special permit. And as a last resort, my group that I'm with wrote up a special condition to the permit which would allow those of us who do not want to be poisoned-
Your time is up. Thank you, ma'am.
-S-Power would pay for their property so we could get out of Spotsia County.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chuck Watkins, followed by Ed Kirkhoven. Mr. Kirkhoven, followed by Richard Janelle.
Good evening. I'm Ed Kirkhoven. I'm from the Cortlandt District. I wanted to express my disappointment with the approval for the Chancerville North project I'm disappointed, because I find the project to be boring, unexciting, very basic, straight roads. It's unimaginative. It's not aesthetically pleasing. And it's not within keeping of the character of the neighborhood around. Chancerville, Regency Chancerville, the lot sizes are considerably larger than the lot sizes of the project that you approved tonight. And, that's, that's my presentation. Thank you.
Mr. Janelle, followed by Lou Sherman.
Good evening. Richard Janelle, Livingston District. I have three points regarding the recommended restrictions to be included in the S-Power SUP that I wanted to emphasize. First is, S-Power testified before the SCC in response to interrogatories that biosolids, fertilizers containing phosphorus, and chemical cleaning agents would not be used on-site during construction or operation. Therefore, a prohibition against the use of these substances should rightly be imposed in the SUP. Two, burning of cut-over debris or any other materials on-site must be prohibited as well. In response to health and safety concerns, S-Power agreed to mulch most of the woody cut-over debris on-site, but stated an intention to trench burn some of the debris, such as stumps. Trench burning supposedly reduces the amount of smoke and ash resulting from combustion, but it doesn't remove the very small particles that are 2.5 microns or smaller that are the ones that are dangerous to human health. Particles of that size are particularly troublesome as regards children, especially children with asthma, teenagers, elderly people, and individuals with conditions such as heart disease, emphysema, and asthma. Lastly, S-Power's proposal regarding fire protection on-site is totally inadequate. Here, we're talking about an area of the size of the city of Fredericksburg, and there will be no fire equipment or fire personnel on-site. I think that is totally unacceptable when you think about the fact that all of these solar panel arrays will be fixed with, to the ground, or supported above the ground on I-beam steel. 1.8 million solar panels. That's a lot of I-beam steel out in a wide-open area where we get lots of thunderstorms. And it's a matter of when, not if, there's a lightning strike out there, and what it does, especially in a dry season, to all the grasses and trees and whatnot that are going to be out there. There will be human activity out there that could potentially result in a fire. 25% of all wildfires are started by lightning. The rest of them mostly are started by human activity. There's 2,700 homes around the periphery of the site. If a, just for the sake of discussion, if a wildfire started near the center of the site, Site A, and traveled about 10 miles an hour, which is average for a wildfire-
Thank you. Your time's up. Thank you.
Lou Sherman, followed by Hugh, I think it's Malloy.
My name is Lou Sherman. I'm from the Livingston District, and I'd like to talk about the decommissioning plan for S-Power. The original decommissioning and restoration plan by S-Power listed total estimated costs for decommissioning of $1.375 million, or approximately 76 cents per each panel. We immediately saw that costs for this plan were seriously underestimated, and we reported to you that our own research online had disclosed decommissioning costs for sites that were 2 megawatts to 10 megawatts. They were, they had decommissioning costs 10 to 15 times larger than what S-Power was proposing. And of course, S-Power had a site that was anywhere from 50 to 250 times larger than those sites. So, what's going on here? S-Power, as you know, has developed many solar farms, so they should have had a pretty good grasp of what it would cost to decommission a site this large. Was their math bad? Did they just accidentally put the decimal point two places to the left in their calculations? Or were they deliberately underestimating costs? Obviously, lower costs would mean a smaller surety bond that they would have to fund. And of course, the county, if that's the case, would be on the hook for a lot more than it would think. Subsequently, S-Power commissioned another study that was issued in May, and it was submitted to you for consideration. This study by Swinerton Renewable Energy estimated that the decommissioning costs would be $31.3 million, a figure that's 23, 23 times larger than the original S-Power estimate. Admittedly, this is a better figure, but still quite not enough, in our opinion. However, and this is a big however, the Swinerton report reflects that there would be an expected net recycling revenue of 26.3 million, thus reducing the total decommissioning costs to only $5 million. This is totally unrealistic. First of all, recycling revenues should not be used to reduce overall decommissioning costs. This project has a shelf life of 35 years. How can you project a market for recycling materials that far into the future? How do you know when technology won't make some of the materials obsolete and therefore of no value? I disagree with some of the assumptions made by Swinerton. For instance, it expects to recover $8.1 million from recycling the photovoltaic modules. Our own research indicates that there is no recycling market for these panels, and in fact, would cost an additional $26.85 million based on current market prices. This information was provided to your staff in October. Has S-Power provided your staff with any cooperative documentation to support its recycling estimates? S-Power's decommissioning report-
Thank you very much. Your time's up. Appreciate it.
Hugh Malloy, followed by Mike. I can't read your writing, sorry.
Good evening. Thank you very much for taking the time to listen to me. I don't unfortunately have prepared comments, and the reason for that is that it was late this afternoon that we found out with fellow residents that the board was going to discuss the north retreat on 137-home development. I'm a little dismayed that this went all the way through this commission, and I live less than 1,000 feet from it, and no one ever took the opportunity to contact the other community, which is, this community that's under development, you approved, it'll have a severe impact on the other community. Maybe if you didn't look at the, the roads that go into this community, which is our road, it's a private road, it's not wider than a double driveway, and we're going to put another 137 homes on that road, plus the 283 houses that will be existing in the retreat, Regency, excuse me. And at the end of that road is the elementary school, and it's just a disaster right now. There is another opportunity to put an entrance into that development. You say it's only for emergencies. Originally, I was told two years ago that it was also going to be used for construction. And to use that particular entrance and the flow of traffic into the- And to use that particular entrance and the flow of traffic into the, what do you call it, the road and Route 3 develops an unsafe situation for the children at the elementary school. And I have to believe you'd take that into consideration. And the other point, I understand, and I can't find it, is that the profers indicate that they can annex our clubhouse. Well, that's ridiculous. They'd have to come through a gate, and also, our clubhouse is not large enough to accommodate another 137 homes. Today, we had an annual board meeting. We had to rent the Raritan Club to accommodate the community, and to add another 137 people just won't work. And I might go back. I was one of the original owners of Tricord Homes, and at that time, the clubhouse was around 12,000 square feet. When Toll Brothers bought it, they reduced it to 4,000. So, we just don't have the area to accommodate the community for functions, and that's all I have to say. I would hope in the future that if anything else goes brought up regarding that particular development, that the adjacent people should be notified.
Thank you. Your time's up. Anybody else wish to speak this evening?
My name is Mike McElloshco. My handwriting sucks, and I'm from the Livingston District, and I am representing myself. I've sat through a number of these meetings, through S-Power presentations, review of the Planning Commission special use permit, and I have a number of concerns, but I'm really only going to concentrate on two: water usage and traffic congestion. Initially, S-Power said that they were going to use 300 million gallons of water taken from wells drawn from the aquifer under Spotsylvania County. Under duress, they reduced this to 100 million gallons and said that they would use county water. They initially said they'd use it exclusively, and in fact, even offered $3.1 million out of seven for a project to be undertaken to help improve water delivery to the area. But they want to barge ahead before that's completed, and have said if they don't have adequate water delivery, they'll rely on the wells. Now, as a personal aside, I happen to like being on county water. I used to live in Northern Virginia, and I was on the third deepest well in Northern Virginia, and it was very low-yielding, and so I was always concerned about water levels and the aquifer level. And I would think anybody living around that S-Power project would be concerned about their water level as well. The second one is traffic congestion. The heaviest traffic will come along Orange Plank Road. Among the things that S-Power has suggested is building a roundabout at the intersection of Orange Plank and Brock Road, which is a historic intersection owned by the National Park Service. To get that done, which by the way, they proposed would only be done after construction was completed, so it would have no value to reduce congestion, would take literally an act of Congress because National Park Service would have to go to Congress to get that approval. And of course, the National Park Service isn't going to do it. Again, as an aside, I'm a member of Friends of Wilderness Battlefield. We sit at Elwood and like to talk about the historic perspectives. It's the reason a lot of people come to Spotsylvania County to see the historic battlefields. They bring revenue here. It's hard to say, "Hey, don't go to this intersection, there's a roundabout, and there used to be trenches and monuments and other nice things there." In summary, until S-Power comes up with reasonable alternatives for water use and reduction, actual reduction of traffic congestion, the Planning Commission cannot summarize, cannot finalize the special use permit. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members, I'm Russ Mueller. I live in the Livingston District. I speak as an individual first. As a respondent to the State Corporation Commission, I just want to have on the record that when I presented the conditions we're asking for before this commission and the Board, that none other than the state judge and the attorneys made it indelibly clear that the Board of Supervisors and therefore your commission has all the authority necessary to include the kinds of conditions we've asked for to prevent the kind of harm that is described in your own county code. Also, I have it on good authority that the conditions we're asking are reasonable within the legal construct of state law. Now, another gentleman spoke on this water issue. We presented many conditions to prevent harm to the wells, the aquifer, the springs that affect Fawn Lake, et cetera. They still stand before you. We're not going to respond to some of the things that the gentleman alluded to, which actually are not yet before this commission, until there are specific details where this large company commits to, such as using only county water. And if that is the case, then there's a very easy condition you can put in: use only county water. And please do that, if that's what they are going to say. But that isn't what they're going to say. Frankly, they want to do 359 days of well water over 360 days. That's what their latest application information says. And they will do that because the water hookups won't be done in time. So the 3.1 million they're going to pay for the 7 million is towards a total upgrade of the water system. That can't be done for probably a year. So they won't have that available, and not even a hookup straight through Fawn Lake if they buy Fawn Lake property itself to hook up that water system. So they will use it.
Thank you very much. Your time's up.
Alfred King, Livingston District. Two points. At an S-Power hearing a couple of weeks ago, I went up to them and asked them how in the world they were going to get finished and start construction, finish with this hearings and start construction in March. It's my understanding that one month, one year after they filed their application, you have to give them an answer. There's no way that the Board of Supervisors and the Planning Commission can each have public hearings that we can get the actual draft of the special use permit, modify it, request changes, and have the normal governmental controls in a way that will get a definitive answer for S-Power by March. One way or another, that schedule has got to be modified. And I'm not a lawyer, and I don't understand what this one-year deadline is, but I cannot believe that the state requires you to approve their recommendation or request in one year. And if it's going to take two years or three years, we're talking about enough importance for the county and its residents that we should take the time and not be rushed. The second issue that I have is, and I'm in the process of doing a financial analysis, the preliminary results of which, however, are very, very clear. Even with the $600,000 payment promised by S-Power, there will be a net decrease in tax revenues for the county. Put a different way, S-Power is asking for us to subsidize their electricity production and sale to companies like Microsoft. Why we should subsidize them, I don't know, and I don't know if you can have a financial requirement that the county not have a negative outlook as part of your special use permit, but one way or the other, the county residents shouldn't be asked to pay a net for this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, do you want to speak?
Yes, Mike, a little beer. 11201 Chanson Motives Lane. I want to talk about the water usage. They're talking about the drilling wells that they got three wells now, and according to the analysis, there's cyanide in the water they're drawing out of the wells. Well, they're going to use a monitoring well over there beside me, which is probably about a mile from where they've already drilled wells at. Well, in this one-mile area, the water table could drop 100 feet where they're pulling the water out at and not touch the water where I'm at, according to the wells, because it's in different channels, different stations. Because they're, one of them's 500-foot, that's 300-foot, and they'll tell them how deep the well is, what they're going to be monitoring with. Well, on top of all that, they're going to use the water out of these wells supposedly for construction, which means they're going to be pouring it on the ground for compaction. Well, the cyanide's going to run off into everybody's property, everybody's wells along the area of this solar field, which in my case is only 50 foot from my well, it's going to contaminate my well. You know, it's not a matter of what is going to happen, it's when it's going to happen, because they're going to do it. I see construction over there now that I haven't seen before, but I notice lights back over there at nighttime that weren't there six months ago. You know, and I, you know, don't know what they are, and that, you know, but I know that they're doing something. And they're doing it over top, you know, what y'all are allowing them to do. You know, it could be the landowner, but it could, you know, most time the landowner there is doing what S-Power wants them to do. But my main concern is, is their neighbors' wells and everything being contaminated or just going dry just by the water usage. And if they tie on to the Nire reservoir, everybody who's been here any length of time knows during the droughts, you can walk across that reservoir, you know? So, everybody in the county will be in jeopardy far as water usage then. So what are we benefiting from it? We're benefiting nothing. We're putting the whole county in jeopardy with, you know, giving them the usage of the other water. Saying it might be nine months, maybe a year, maybe three years, but you know, good and well, it's going to happen. We're all going to be drinking bottled water. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else this evening? Seeing none. Any other comments or questions from the Planning Commission this evening? With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.[1773.36]